Kids, and before we know it's gonna be $5,000.
It's a man.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have public comments, and we have a few people signed up. So Ms. Pamela Jackson.
Amelia Jackson, Ashley Estates. I'm speaking to Madison, Alabama future chief, police chief and federal citizens as a citizen reporter. I want the police chief to know what Madison, Alabama is. I am reporting to the police chief, the state of Madison, Alabama. It is a tale of two cities, and upside down sometimes. Google named Madison, Alabama as the digital capital of Alabama. In Madison, Alabama, many do not like videos and pictures, except when being praised. Some do like videos and pictures when they're seen as the best of something, like this sight of heaven by the business community. Hey Zoomers out there, did you know that last year using Zoom was illegal? And if you didn't like that, you could move to another city. Then our chair's council members got COVID. Zoom was suddenly okay. Multiple Zoom licenses were available early on, and numerous cities had already made accommodations to their cities. You probably know future police chief that many cities record and archive all their business meetings for years. But Madison, Alabama, being upside down and all, we won't have money for this. We won't have staffing, or it'll be too much of a burden for transparency and accountability. And we have plenty of money swimming in the general fund. It could be politics, especially when all council members ran on, almost all council members ran on accountability and transparency. I know that tonight there will be an ordinance for a non-Madison resident who is a certified alborist that will help our fair city. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for sharing your expertise with Madison. On the flip side, willing, long-term elderly and disabled volunteers are treated shabbily as ornaments broken in boxes. I personally was denied reasonable accommodations as a disabled person. A short period of time later, a disabled person received a city coin. Future police chief Madison, Alabama loves tradition. We now have our only two high schools named after a ride-or-die segregationist, Bob Jones. The other high school is named after our founder and slave owner, James Clemens. Now, when James Clemens name came up, some opposed it, but it was swatted down. I speak again on this because there may be a third high school. It would also be a shame to have a triple crown. Also, there may be folks who want to give money and power to Mayor Paul Finley's nonprofit that he started in 2012. Yes, the tax-funded Madison Visionary Partners, aka MVP, controls grant money, finds volunteers and names buildings. There might be a time for a building to be named after a person through a front, middle or back donation. This naming business can again be upside down, a tale of two cities. All this reporting is about being resolute, right and reasonable. It is right to keep using inspirational names for Madison City government buildings such as Discovery, Horizon, and non-emotional names like Big Town. It is reasonable to allow citizens to participate in their government, whether they are sick or older, whether it's the next day, whether it's real time or a month later. Month later, it is resolute to finally be transparent and accountable. Record all, record and archive all government meetings now. Back to policing. I was not well enough to speak about the Dana Fletcher killing before. If it was okay for second-term council members and the mayor to have a word ceremony for the officers involved, it is perfectly fine to bring those officers out of the shadows, clear their name from suspicion, show all the video, not just the screenshots, and a story told by the district attorney that Madison Police works with every day. Madison County Police is not exactly an outside agency. I know that when a life saved, the specifics down to the segments of medical treatment is mentioned, and there's nothing more glorious than saving a life. Finally, future police chief, I would like you to do a salary analysis within the first 90 days of your tenure and give raises to all of our police department. I support a well-trained, Calea-certified Madison, Alabama Police Department and Madison Police Foundation. Now, I want to call out two council members. Councilmember Karen Denzine of District 6. Councilmember to Karen Denzine, it is greatly appreciated how professional you are with concerns personally, on video and written correspondence. Many thanks for keeping your campaign promises. And finally, my home council member Renee Bartlett, District 5, for being an advocate for the least among us. Thank you, Councilmember Bartlett, for supporting neighborhood parks rehab. I will end with a familiar quote from a brilliant council member. "In the end, all we want, police, future police chief, is respect, safety and acceptance." Thank you all for your service to the great city of Madison, Alabama.
Next, Perzune, we have Jessica Lou Allen.
Hello. I am speaking on the importance of archiving the recordings of these meetings. I am calling from my home. I have two small children, and usually as such, I am unable to attend most of these meetings without being able to be interrupted by tiny humans. I am greatly enjoying having these meetings, being able to be streamed so I can keep up with what's going on with my city that I greatly enjoy living in. I'm relatively new to the area, but I'm looking forward to getting more involved as the world opens back up. I am also thanking you all for streaming them because by archiving them, I can go back and get clarification on issues that I may not have lived here for. And also, it provides transparency when it comes to elections so I can go back and see who I might want to vote for in the future. And I would also like to say by providing this knowledge, you are empowering myself and other citizens of Madison to get involved and make this place a greater place for us and future generations to live. And as elected officials, I'm thanking you for doing your duty to serve the community with people to means to attend and those also without. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Tara Bailey, Perzune.
Good evening, council members. Name is Tara Bailey, and I live in Ashley Estates. Thank you for continuing to make Zoom available for citizens to offer their public comments. I'm here this evening to first thank Cory Alfred, Mayor Finley and council for their upcoming resolution to approve $300,000 to upgrade some of our small parks. Happy to see that my neighborhood park, Ashley Park, made the list as it is in great need of a new place structure. Our small parks are often the only public meeting places within walking distance from our homes. Providing these upgrades will hopefully lead to an even greater use of our parks. Although the $300,000 will only cover eight of our 30 small parks, I've been told that a comprehensive plan to upgrade all of the parks in the next couple of years is in the works. If the current money is coming from the CARES funding, will money from the American Rescue Plan be used to continue the process of upgrading all of the parks in Madison? I would encourage Cory and all of you to look at these upgrades to the parks as an opportunity to engage with the community. Prior to spending $300,000, it would be great to find out what residents living in these parks would like to see in their park. I know the proposal being introduced this evening may not be exactly what ends up in the parks. For instance, a shade structure over a swing set is mentioned for Ashley Park, but we have plenty of shade, and neighbors would prefer a basketball hoop, among other things. I would love to see a town hall around this topic. The city received $2.4 million of CARES Act money that ended up in the general fund. I would like to know how much has been spent, on what, how much is left, and what projects are being discussed in spending the remainder of the money. Would also encourage the mayor and council to be transparent and inclusive when it comes not only to the CARES Act money, but the $5 million or so dollars the city will be receiving from the American Rescue Plan later this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all we had signed up, so if anyone else would like to address, Mayor and council, you've got three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Frida Fletcher, Dana Fletcher's older sister, from, I live in Huntsville. I received a message that probably should have been directly forwarded to Mayor Finley, so I'll go ahead and read it. It says, "I will thank all those listed in the flyer you left on my car. Mr. Fletcher should have complied with orders given by police. He is not a victim, just comply." Simple concept. And it was signed by Kelly McGuffin, that's spelled M-C-G-U-F-F-I-N. And she's referring to the Justice for Dana flyers that have been passed out all over town in our efforts to have people know what happened in Dana's case in October of 2019. And it struck me that this individual probably hasn't been brought up to speed on the facts of the case. And so I wanted to give an opportunity to see if Mr. Finley would like to respond to Mrs. McGuffin, you know, in lieu of me doing so, in an effort to, you know, be competitive with each other, you know, keep down some conflict. So would you like to respond to Mrs. McGuffin's concerns?
I've never seen what you're presenting.
I do have a copy for each of you. Would you like me to bring those forward to you?
You can get them to City Clerk, you sure can. Yes, ma'am.
And if you would like to respond to her, or if you decide that you don't want to do it, and I will, you know, craft a message back to her if that's what you would like for me to do. But if you do, I would like for you to let her know to not contact me or my family again. So I would appreciate that if you could include that in the message to Mrs. McGuffin. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Fletcher, and I'm a resident of Madison County, Alabama. My son is Dana Sherrod Fletcher. He was murdered by the Madison Police in October 2019. And the only reason I'm here is to make you think. Like always, make you remember that you have corruption in your city. Leadership is corrupt on down. Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, the DA. There's corruption, and you know it. You know it, but evidently you like it that way. Again, I hope you understand that I live with this every day. That dreadful day. My heart has been exploded into pieces. And you guys act like it's nothing, nothing to it. But there is. All I want is transparency. You've been talking about that all this meeting, everybody, transparency, accountability. Where is it? I'd like to see. All of this for an innocent man that was sitting in his van with his family. Can you believe that? If you've seen the video, which we haven't been privy to see the video, but if you've seen any of it, you would, I don't see how you cannot stand up to your city leaders and tell them to do something about it. What if that was one of your children? That was innocent. Brutalized. Dog. Sit on him. Tased. I hate this. I hate coming and disrupting your day, your evening. But mine has been disrupted. My life has been disrupted. So as long as I don't, as long as there's no justice, I'm not gonna give you any peace. I'll be here whenever I can to remind you of the corruption that you live among. Think about that.
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was compelled to speak. You see, this woman, this woman can barely walk, and she's doing all this for her son because y'all are not giving her justice for her son. All they want to see is the tapes. That's all they want to see. They, and they want justice. I don't understand why you guys have been done this. It's been almost two years. They have been waiting, two years. How would y'all feel if someone murdered your son? How would you feel? And you got no justice from it. How would you feel? Think about it, if it's your own child. Do you feel your child should die? Do you feel like just because they got interaction with the police should die? No. These people have been tortured by y'all. Tortured every single day. They are tortured because of y'all. You guys have no humanity towards them? No heart? All they want is the tapes. They don't, you don't even have to release it to the public, just them. That's who, that's who truly deserve it. That's all they're asking is for, is for justice and for them to see the tapes. This little girl witnessed her father being murdered. You know how much therapy she's gonna need? You know how much therapy and hundreds and thousands of dollars of therapy that y'all should pay for? This little girl has already, already, is, is already, already gonna have a step back because of all the trauma she has gone through. This little girl, look at her in the eye and tell her, you know my Justice for Dana Fletcher. Tell her in the eye. This is ridiculous, ridiculous. I have to watch them suffer every day. And I can only imagine how they feel. I don't have any children, but how can I be mad about somebody's child being, being murdered when I don't even have children? Y'all should have children. Y'all should understand how it feels like when your child be ripped from your arms. I don't understand why y'all can't release it. Many other police departments have released tapes for all these other things. All these other, um, all these other interactions with the police. Why can't y'all do it? What is so hard? They have asked you since day one, why couldn't you not have released it? Because you got something to hide. If you didn't have anything to hide, you would show it. If you did, if you did have a gun, you would show it. Show up the videotape. Show it. If you have nothing to hide, if I have nothing to hide, I will show. If someone tells me, Dana, you're lying. I would, I would say, hey, now, I'm not, I'm not a liar. I would show. I would show, so to the point of I'm not a liar. I don't know how you're okay with being called a liar every single day. I don't know how you can go to sleep being called a liar, corrupt, all these things. I don't know how that can not hurt you, and you don't want to prove yourself. I don't understand. I don't understand. If I was being called corrupt like she was, I would want to show that I'm not corrupt.
That's three minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Subject. Is it Owen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At the seniors center today, I was asked a question, and I felt like I will bring it to you. The seniors want to know if the pool at the Three Springs Community Center will be used for seniors? And possibly with, that the seniors can use it when they are there, or when it's gonna be used?
Sure. And I think the quick, Steve and them had that looked at, and Cory's out here. If I'm not mistaken, I think they found it unusable for anybody to use.
Well, I tell them it didn't look very good.
Yeah, it did not. So we had it analyzed. I don't think right now it'll be in a position where we can use it. If we were, we were hoping, obviously, it would because it's shallow and we could use it for a lot of the senior activities. But I think as we look at the plans right now, it can't be used.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. That will close public comments and move into the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Finance committee met tonight. We've looked over the weekly bills. Everything was in order, and consent agenda was in order. And I'm gonna turn it over to John or Renee, whoever picks it out. We had several donations.
Yeah, I'd like to point out a $25 donation, a big deposit in the fire department, as well as a couple donations from Senator Tom Butler.
Keep going, John.
All right, so what I was, was two donations from Senator Tom Butler. One in the amount of $25,000 for Home Place Park. Another in the amount of $5,000 for use by the police department for program expenses. And then finally, a donation in memory of family of Blanche Erby. Memorial donation. It's requested by the family for the Madison Senior Center Nutrition Medal Program in lieu of flowers. So, did you make that in a form of a motion?
I'll make it in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion is second. Is there, is there any discussion? Thank you, the vote, please.
No, sir.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into a presentation of reports. We'll start with, start with the mayor.
All right, and I will start by asking for council approval of Resolution Number 2021-188-R approving the neighborhood, neighborhood park upgrade plan funding, and that's not to exceed, my three minutes up?
Three minutes.
That was finance.
Yeah, that was for finance.
That was good.
You run like that?
Not to exceed $300,000. This is real, part of where we're using our CARES Act reimbursement is for that, and it will come out of the general fund.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
You know, this started with discussions we've had with multiples of you council and talking about where we could start using some of the reimbursement that we received. This was the easiest one of the ones. We went to Cory, they already had a great plan in place. They chose, I think, the eight different parks and the equipment that we thought we could put in there right now. You know, when I hear Tara and folks like that talk, I think it's great to get feedback. And as we look to some of the other ones, as we go to the next step, that may be something that we look to do. But Cory and them do have a lot of feedback that they not only receive from the residents close in there, they have a lot of contact with them, but also their folks as they maintain those. So some of it's new, some of it's replacement. All of it goes towards our citizens and using it in a way that's beneficial to our city.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Move to District Number 1.
Yes, sir. I have one item for your consideration tonight. The HR department met at 5:15, and at the request of the building department head, he has requested approval of hiring a building inspector, inspector at a higher step. This is due to area competition among area municipalities, and we've lost two inspectors to other cities in our area. HR committee is recommending approval. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
I was gonna say Director Towery is here if we have any questions.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Addition number two.
Yes. I attended the TACOG meeting last month, and one of the things that they discussed was that tomorrow is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. There are many different types of elder abuse. The obvious, physical abuse, emotional abuse. There's also financial abuse that often happens to our seniors. And I had never thought of that as a form of abuse, but they explained it, and it sure is. But it's, it's a case of where the finances that need, that the senior needs to be able to survive and to take care of themselves are being siphoned off by someone else. And so just to make everybody aware. And so, um, just to make everybody aware that that exists. Also, um, Mara, uh, Councilmember Robleski and I, um, both attended the, um, governor's virtual update, and the governor is very optimistic about the next year and what's gonna happen, especially in North Alabama. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Addition number three.
I know business.
Addition number five.
Uh, last month, I attended my first Huntsville Public Library Board meeting since being appointed. A couple of news items from that meeting. We are posting now for an executive director. We've had an interim director during the pandemic. That posting will stay open to the end of June, and we will anticipate having someone hired by our July board meeting. Uh, the Huntsville Madison County Public Library System is undergoing a strategic plan review process and a salary survey. Um, it's no secret that in the nonprofit world, um, there are a lot of people moving jobs, going to private industry, and so it's time for the library to survey, uh, their salaries, and I am, uh, assisting them in, as one of my first assignments. Um, also, I attended the Madison Chamber meeting this month, and an announcement that the Business Expo in Kids' Day will be Saturday, June 26th, from 10 to 2, at Insanity Skate Complex. And they are still looking for three gold sponsorships, if any businesses would be interested in doing that. They're $750 each. My shop local spotlight at this council meeting is gonna be, uh, in our industrial area, Five Boys Production on Jetplex Circle. A lot of you may be, um, looking for t-shirts and spirit wear and things like that, and so I highly recommend Five Boys Production, uh, for that. And a big thank you to Cory, uh, for all the work that he has done when we, uh, came to him and asked him to look at parks and help us prioritize. He, he has already had a very detailed plan. He's been, it, it's amazing when you, uh, get to see all of the things that he monitors for our city and what he's in charge of, but he, um, had such a very thoughtful process. It did not take him long, did it, Mayor, to-
Oh, no.
-answer your call. And thank you, Mayor Finley, for supporting this, because one of the first things Mayor Finley said when we discussed it was, it's one of the things that, uh, is, uh, so key in the city of Madison is supporting our neighborhood parks. And so thank you all for doing that.
All right. District number six.
I would like to thank Dr. Donaldson today. She put together a tour of the five schools here in Madison that are doing summer school. They are wonderful learning opportunities for our children. So many children were impacted through the COVID. They had to learn in situations that weren't to their, you know, some people just learn better face to face, some people don't. They have put together wonderful programs at each of these schools, and I did not see a single child today who wished they were someplace else. They were all actively engaged. They were all learning. They had fun games. They had different themes going on. It was wonderful to see what they are doing during this four weeks, to help our children just to have that extra step up, so when they start school again this coming fall, they'll be that much more prepared. And it wa, it was just a wonderful event, and I really do thank the whole staff of the, um, of the school system and all of the teachers for all of their hard work and all that they're doing for the children. Um, I think it's just wonderful, and I wanted to give that shout out to them. Also, on Saturday, I went out with the tree beautification people, you know, those little signs that say, oh, this is so beautiful here? That's what we judged this weekend. Uh, I want to thank all those, those communities that do put in a lot of effort to just make their entrances look that much nicer. Uh, I appreciate all that they do do. Uh, we did look at over 60 different properties. There are a lot that are out there. Um, and I just want to thank those that did well. Also, um, I did visit what we're now calling, uh, it's the active adults. Um, it's the aging adults that are living actively down at the senior center now, because there's so much going on down there that is fun, that is there to get movement, to keep us all actively aging. And I just love that Bonnie has just had this whole different outlook at what we do down there. Um, it's wonderful. So if you are one of us actively aging adults, um, go down there and check it out. There's just so much for us down there. Um, and I appreciate all that Bonnie does, too. Um, I also did two more ride-alongs with the police department, getting to know them a little bit better, what it is they do, how they do interact compassionately and kindly, um, with the citizens. And, um, I have so much respect for all of them, and just want to let them know that. Um, and as far as the, uh, archiving, I totally support that. I think that it is important. I personally have gone back to things that were said in December and watched the video there, because I just, what exactly was said? And it's just good. It's good to have that history. It's good to continue to archive that, to know what is said. I know we have minutes and stuff, but it's just not the same. Um, and so all those, I do speak on that. I, uh, I support you in that also. Um, and we will continue to work towards it, I hope. Uh, other than that, uh, that is all. Thank you.
Addition number seven.
All right, a couple things. Uh, just call, uh, notice to the planning commission meeting this Thursday at 5:30 here in City Hall. Um, I think it's broadcast over, over the thing, I, I can't remember, but, uh, and the other thing, and I guess there's two parts to it, is County Line Road, uh, this Saturday from 7 to 11. Um, I can't remember from what intersection to the, to the other. I know it's south to County Line or County, or to, uh-
Palmer, south of Palmer, I think.
The south of Palmer to Old Highway 20?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, there is a 5K and 10K race, uh, this Saturday morning, and you still have time to sign up if you like those kind of things. Uh, 10K, you have until 11:59 tonight to do it for $25, and a 5K for $25 as well. So you can, uh, double your pain for the same amount of money. Um, and, uh, if your kids want to, from 9:15 to 9:45, they can run the bases at James Clemens with the baseball players, so, uh, and that costs zero, so. Um, but they've got a website. Basically, if you Google County Line State of Mind, uh, 10K and 5K, uh, you can sign up, but looks to be a good event and, uh, probably a lot of fun. I think that kind of history-wise, that used to be our Run Through the Roses-
Mm-hmm.
-has been transitioned. It was supposed to be last year, due to COVID, got pushed out to, uh, this year and, and this time of year, so. Oh, I'm gonna rush you out there, all right? That's all I got.
All right.
All right, I've got, uh, one thing. I have resolution 2021-190R, appointing John Gandy as, uh, chief of police. Uh, looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-190R.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
I just want to, throughout the process, I want to thank H R for, you know, when you start off with almost 60 applicants, narrow it down. We had so many great applicants, and it's, it's tough to get down to that point, but Terry and her team do a fantastic job, and especially when it gets to council and having the packets that you do. Thank you for all that you guys have done to, to make that happen.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. That's all I have. We'll move into, uh, board, board appointments. We have two. Want to start with the beautification board?
That's parents.
Yes. That's, that's aging adults. Active aging.
Actively.
Uh, I would like to put forth Liz Smith for place 14 on the beautification and tree board. Um, she brings a wealth of knowledge to this position as arborist, and I appreciate that she is willing to come forward and help. So I'm putting forward her name.
Green. Any other nominations? If not, we'll move forward with, uh, Ms. Liz Smith, uh, my acclamation. And next is Madison Municipal Cemetery Committee, place seven.
Yes, sir. I would like to nominate Mr. Jason Richardson to place seven on the Madison Municipal Cemetery Committee with the term expiration of May 28th, 2025. And Mr. Richardson is here, and we thank him very much in advance for his service to this committee.
Absolutely.
Any, any other, any other nominations? If not, we'll move forward with Mr. Richardson with acclamation. Um, and there's no public hearings. Moving into department reports, start with Mary Beth in planning.
Good evening. Uh, first on your, uh, planning items is proposed ordinance 2021-158, and this is for vacation amusement. You can see the, um, the highlighted, kind of yellowish highlighted area. This is in a side yard, and it is to, um, the vacation is requested so that the property owner can construct a garage, and, uh, staff and the utilities have all reviewed it and are supporting the vacation and asking for your approval this evening. This is on, um, uh, Thornberry Lane.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get your vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, the next two items are for the same property, um, located at 10775 Seeger's Road. We're not asking for action this evening, other than setting a public hearing. But the first item is, um, a first reading. This is for ordinance 2021-174, and this would be for annexation of 4.9 acres. Uh, you can see it there on the west side of Seeger's. Um, we would have the second reading, um, at the same night as the public hearing. And the third item is, uh, the resolution 2021-175R, and that is to set the public hearing for the same property. Um, the proposed zoning is R1A, which is a low-density zoning, and, um, the public hearing would be set for July 26th.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I have, I have a question with this, uh, 4.9.
Mm-hmm.
Would they, if I heard, um, our plan saying three acres and they're wanting to bring in five, how, how are we going to justify that as a council?
The, the, uh, growth policy says approximately three acres. Um, since the growth policy was adopted, there's been an annexation of 3.5 acres and then 3.76 acres, right before the policy was adopted, a couple months before it was adopted, but while we still had it in draft form and knew where it was going, there was an annexation that was approved of 6.94 acres, but it, it was before the policy was in effect. Um, the reason that, um, and we'll get into more of this in the hearing, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds before the hearing, but, um, can we get the exhibit back up, please? Thanks. Um, this, and I'll have a, an aerial that'll show you the property features, but, um, on this property, um, to the west of the property, there's an existing pond. At the north end of the property is a creek, um, and there's an existing home on the southern end of the property. Um, and so when we actually look at what could be developed, it's about two acres of this site, practically speaking, and the entire property's in the floodplain. Um, so any kind of development is going to require raising of the site, which further constricts the amount of development. Um, we, the property owners do plan on building a, a home on the property. They're gonna live in the existing home, and then they want to build a second home, their dream home, a little bit north of where the existing home is. Um, and so we could have gone forward with an ag zoning, um, proposal, but we know that they ultimately want a second house, and that wouldn't have worked with the ag zoning, which requires three acres. So, um, the other zoning category down below is R1, which is one acre. Um, we didn't propose that just because we were planning on, um, suggesting that get eliminated with the zoning update, because pretty much nobody's requesting R1 zoning, because land prices are so high. It's just not happening, and there's no point in leaving a zoning district on the book if nobody's developing to it. So that's why, um, we staff proposed R1A, because ag technically can't work. R1A could cover their, the existing, if they subdivided into two lots, R1A would be the next lowest. It's an 18,000 square foot minimum. So we could have proposed again ag zoning, and it could have, um, annexed in. It still would have been above the three acres, but it might have given people more comfort, but we kind of knew what their end game was, which is to have a second home on the property, which is why we went R1A. This is one of these properties that sort of falls, you know, in kind of a, a limbo stage, right? They're not developers. They're not looking to do a subdivision. They want to build a house, and, you know, they're just over the three acres. And so, um, we had a, a, a conversation about it at the planning commission meeting. Ultimately, the planning commission did support it. It was unanimous, though I think there were, I'll confirm before your next, uh, for the hearing, but I think there were two people, two or three, that voted against it, uh, because it was over the three. And, um-
It was six, it was six-two.
Six-two?
It was six-two.
Thank you. We had somebody absent.
Yeah, it was six to two, and the question did come up very similar to that. Um, and, uh, Mary Beth explained about the buildable acreage versus the amount of acreage there. Um, I think for some on the, on the commission, that was kind of the, the tipping point, so.
So we'll, uh, again, for the public hearing, go into more detail, um, and, uh, on it, but we realize it's, it's a question mark. It was just one of these kind of anomaly properties, because it was, you know, they just want to build a house, but it's a little bit bigger. Um, the one that was 6.94 acres, again, it got annexed in before, approved before the policy went into effect. Um, in that case, part of the property got zoned ag, because it was wooded, and then there was a portion that got zoned for residential. The reason why we didn't look at some kind of bifurcation zoning here, like zoning three acres of it ag and then the other part of it, is because we don't exactly know where they're gonna subdivide, right? So they're gonna build the stream house, but they've got a floodplain to deal with. Um, we know where the pond is. We know where the creek is. Um, so we were trying to accommodate them, right? And, um, you can, when, when I show you an aerial next time, or in July, you'll see where the existing house is, and we could easily draw a line just north of that, right? Draw a new property line, and then you can, I'll carve out the roughly two or so acres where they could build a house. Um, but again, not knowing exactly where that line was gonna be, we didn't want to try and zone it and then have to go back and rezone it. Um, the other option would be to zone it all ag, and then when they do come in to subdivide, they could pay and go back through the public hearing process to rezone it from ag to R1A. When we thought it'd be, they're being very transparent about what they want to do, and, um, so rather than us having to go back through the public hearing process twice, than paying And, um, so rather than us having to go back through the public hearing process twice, then paying an additional $1,500, we thought that we would just present what we see the end game to be and you get to make that decision.
Can, I know we do development agreements with, with developers. Can you do that with them and say, would, if we do this, you're only going to build one house on this property or is that?
Um, you know, development agreements are voluntary contracts. Um, given the, the nature of this, we, we didn't, it didn't occur to us to suggest to, on these applicants to do a development agreement.
For instance, some kind of precedence because what if somebody comes with seven acres in, a month? How do we say yes or no to that person because we did it for them?
I understand. Well, there's always detail, there's always specifics, but certainly we can, I can, I can discuss it with them. But again, a DA is a voluntary. We cannot require that and, uh, and we don't.
Go for it either.
That's true. You can, you can deny it. You could deny the request because you don't feel that it's consistent with the growth policy and that's your, you know, purview. We're just trying to be really clear about, you know, the constraints on the property and what the choices are and you get to make those heavy decisions.
Correct.
How many homes could you fit on that parcel of property if it came in R1A and they changed their mind? Or they decided to sell it?
Well, um, we haven't, the, assuming the existing home stays on the property and the pond is the pond, um, you know, and I'll double check it. But when we were at the planning commission, um, Johnny on staff guesstimated roughly two acres. So it's 18,000 minimum, um, for a lot. However, given the way that lot is configured, um, I'm not sure that you could like build a street off of it, right? You might have to have the lots fronting onto Seagulls. So I'd have to take a look at that. But I would say, um, maybe four. I mean, it, at the max density, right? If you assume the entire site was developed, they fill in the pond and do all that, which they can't do in the floodplain. Um, it would be more units, practically speaking, you know, maybe four. And, and I can, we'll try and give you an estimate with the public hearing.
Again, any, any other discussion?
So we're just setting the public hearing.
That's right. For July 26th and we'll get to talk about this again.
Can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes.
And the next item is also setting a public hearing. And this is a rezoning for property in town already. Um, this is resolution 2021-177-R. Uh, this is just over 22 acres in Town Madison on the south side of Graphics Road. You can kind of see it's sort of a, a tan colored property there, just east of Walt Trinan Highway. And, um, the Town Madison developers requesting this rezoning to UC, which matches all of the rest of the Town Madison zoning for, for the most part. The red hashed, uh, red and white hash area is where the Integraf, um, campus is, our Hexagon Campus now, and their rec facility, which is under different ownership. And again, we're asking you to set this public hearing on July 26th.
Any motion?
Leave to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. Mary Beth? Now we have Ca- Cameron with revenue.
You're my favorite person tonight.
Why am I your favorite person?
Because you're the last.
There we go. Miss the last here.
I thought he was going to say you were best looking, but I didn't know.
I was hoping. One item tonight, resolution 182, 2021-182-R, setting public hearing to consider a request from Tarsha Nelson doing business as a pleasure excursion to operate one limousine in the city of Madison. Uh, the public hearing date would be set for Monday, July 12th.
Leave to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? No, Teddy, you can't drive it. Can I get the vote please? Can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.